It is seven o'clock on Thursday, September 8th here at the Albernette City Hall. This is our regular city council meeting for the month of September. We'll go ahead and call this meeting in order. We will start with our pledge of allegiance. Please your eyes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Trump.
Hello.
Councilor Bozenberg.
Present.
Councilor Schatz.
Present.
Councilor Myers.
Here.
TJ is in the back.
Let's let the record reflect that we do have a quorum to conduct business tonight. Any changes to the agenda?
None.
That's posted, no changes. With that, I would seek motion to approve the agenda.
Move.
Moved by Shawn, second by Bozenberg. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. We have sheriff's report is next. We've got our representative from Friendly Lynn County Sheriff's Office.
How many what theirs?
Do you find that there?
Total about sixteen calls for service from yesterday until the sixteenth of last month. We required hours, the four three hours were met. Nothing that I noted.
Questions for the deputy? Concerns? We appreciate you guys. Have a safe night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thanks.
To item number six, the mayor's report. I have just a handful of things tonight. I want to close the loop and follow up after our special meeting that we had on the seventeenth, I believe it was, for the fire truck purchase. We did not give that through that auction. It went for fifty-seven thousand with the buyer's fee. It was a total of sixty-four, so we did approve it to fifty. So we did not get that. I do know we've got the grant process coming up and also just kind of now keeping your eyes out for something equivalent that fit our needs, but just wanted to close the loop on that. We should be expecting the new digital sign that will be a replacement of the block letter sign that we have today. So that's going to be outside of old fire station, eventually new city hall. With that, the word's already spread that that's going to be available for the community and we've had some requests to be able to post messages for different organizations. And so I will be asking staff and we'll bounce it off of council to write a policy on what types of things we'll sponsor on that site, whether we can things for local businesses or keep it to nonprofits, what types of things will be on that site. So we'll be drafting a policy for that before that's in place. Do we have a timeline?
They pushed it back to late October.
Soon though.
Yep.
And my only other call out for council is next month, I will, first of all, find the editable document. We're going to review our capital improvement plan and I do know we've marked off several of the items and so now's the time to be thinking about other projects that we want to cycle into the backend of the five-year plan so that we can keep that up to date and rolling and maintain our momentum. So have the front of your mind any capital improvement projects that we can start adding in. With that, we'll go to council reports. I will start to my right with Councilor Trump.
Uh, not with me yet.
Bozenberg. Myers?
Let's hit turn point.
We have reached the citizen comments on our agenda. We have two types of comments in the city of Albernette, those related to agenda items or non-agenda related items. If you have a comment, please state your name and address clearly for the record and you have five minutes to speak. So are there any citizen comments or agenda related items?
Does that include the rental, the Lynn County rental properties?
Yes, ma'am. Yep. Now would be your time to speak on that.
Okay, we do. Do you want to speak to it Larry or do you want me to?
I don't care. Go ahead. It's your property.
Okay, um, first of all, do you have a problem with our apartments that we have here in town?
Absolutely not.
Why are you considering hiring the Lynn County to inspect them? I thought we had a building committee. We used to.
We do not. So all of our building permits and inspections are done through Lynn County and so this would be a property, both property maintenance and rental property inspection agreement with Lynn County as well.
Well, I'm against that because we have people in this community that are qualified to do inspections and I would much rather pay people from our community than the Lynn County outside people.
I think that's foolish to have people that can do the inspection and not have them do it. I mean, why, why bring Lynn County in when they'll, they'll charge you double or triple whatever a local person would charge.
I'm not against having inspection at all, but I think it should be people from within our community here. We have constructions, we have plumbers.
Electricians. We have all those kinds of people.
Appreciate that.
What?
So we appreciate that. Can we get your name and address for the record?
I'm Mary Lou Martin and this is my husband Larry. We have the four apartments across from the Christian church.
Right, thank you. Any other comments on agenda related items? Okay, getting none? Non-agenda related items? Written reports. Fire department, we will recognize Chief Graham.
I don't have nothing to add. Wonder if he's on the report.
I told you I would note if there was ever a perfect attendance and I believe both Jackson and Nate had a perfect attendance last night.
Did they? Good job. How'd that class go for? Is it coming up? Okay, sorry, my brain's already out.
And two of those calls were, we finished up with one and Nate was like taking over this one, then Nate was like taking over this one, so it's kind of.
Questions for Steve? New flag poles look nice. Is city providing flags? Did we ever decide?
Well, we talked about it the other night in the meeting and I don't know, but we gotta, they're not perfectly set yet. Maybe a sand peck in there or something. I don't, I don't know if I'm so sure. We do have a flag, a fire department flag, Ron designed and purchased. Do you want one of them, but I have two, I don't know. Good question.
So I don't think we have any, right? Do we have any of our flags or state?
Not that would fly on those poles, no.
I would assume we're buying them, but I don't.
Okay, so. Anything else for Steve? How that works?
Only thing I would add is I forgot to put in here that I did sign up to go to the IRWA hall conference in Dubuque, October fourth and fifth. That's mainly to get my seat used for my certificates, but I will leave Monday night as registration starts at seven in the morning in Dubuque and be back Wednesday afternoon. Usually the last pass is about three thirty or four. Done at three thirty or four. Other than that, I've got nothing to add.
Questions for Guy? Mike, Chris, Mike. City clerk.
I have nothing to add, but I would like to say that I'd like to thank Shawn, Senator Trump for all coming in and helping organize and clean up. So greatly appreciate it all and anything you've got in the future.
Because there's a lot of noise back.
I would say given it's a three-page report, there's definitely being progress being made, so.
Yes.
I do just want to call out because it was an agenda item last meeting, I want to pull out of your report, the reconciliation. We did get that completed with help from G-Works, so it ended up being one person for two days. Is that correct?
About two days, fifteen hundred dollars as well, so you know, half of what we had originally planned. And so we're on cue right now to be able to bring in court votes. I'm finishing up the reconciliation for this month. I just want to make sure everything is buttoned up. So we, like I said, we're already on task as far as the dates that I'll be doing the changeover and when we'll be starting court votes. So that does start on the nineteenth, so just keep in mind during that time, I may be on the phone a part of it for two weeks, so just kind of make sure you look over, make sure I'm not on the phone.
Anything for Chris? Move on to the consent agenda. Any additions, changes?
There are no additions. The only thing that we wanted to make a note of was the Flannery Enterprises. We had talked about them billing us for his work and just want to make sure we included that so that you're aware that we did. Go ahead and he sent us an invoice and we would like to get that invoice paid and that's for the work on the renovation for city hall over at the new fire station. Old fire station.
Any questions on that? I'd seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move.
Moved by Trump, second by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. New business, fifteen A, temporary outdoor liquor license approval for Gibbons. I will give the floor to Mr. Gibbons.
We got an ATV ride coming in on September twenty-fourth, approximately one PM. Over three hundred people will be on that ride. My establishment will hold about fifty, so I've applied for a temporary outside permit for about an hour and that's all I need for them just to drink their beer outside. That's what I'm trying to do. I am supplying three hundred tickets for three hundred beers. It's a veteran's ride, so it's all, it's, there's going to be three hundred people in my, my bar.
And just super clarity, so no street closure?
Nope.
This is purely your stuff on the way?
Just they're going to be outside around the doors and that's it.
Any questions for Mike? Love events and bring people to town, so that I would seek commotion for approval for the temporary liquor license for Mr. Gibbons on, I'm sorry, I forgot the date.
September twenty-fourth.
September twenty-fourth in the afternoon. Moved by Shawn, second by Trump. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
What time did you see that?
It's going to be between one and three.
Oh, okay.
We're like the second or third stop on the, on the, it's an honor flight, a UTV ride.
All right, discuss holiday committee and lights. I believe Chris has put this on the agenda.
Yep, so as you know, one way, way to bring people to town is to have, or at least increase the traffic coming down is to have like a holiday light presentation which can then carry into banners, you know, for like Veterans Day or for July events, you know, that kind of thing. We'd like to start, there have been several people that are interested in the start of the committee. My one request was that a committee be formed that would be formed with volunteers that would be going to help put these lights up. I will be discussing with Alliance about changing out our poles so that they have upgraded receptables for the lights to go into and that it would just be a matter of purchasing the lights. Unfortunately, lights are not what they used to be, you know, so we would be looking at anywhere between fifteen to twenty thousand allocation in general funds to be able to purchase the lights that we need to start out. I'm not saying we would spend that much, I'm just wanting to have some sort of a limit that we could work with so that that way we know what we can purchase and then we just bring the committee together, we decide what we were going to purchase, how we're going to put the lights up. I'm thinking possibly right after Thanksgiving, you know, it would be the earliest that we would start. Again, a lot of this would have to be decided by the committee, by the forum. So the first thing I'm asking is, you know, discuss the organization of that committee and then the second would be the limit for the allocation of funds.
I will echo in that the decorations we have today are, they're hand-me-downs.
Fifties.
Yes. We received them used, we did restring them with LED lights so they were at least energy efficient. They are definitely, and not even new to us anymore, we've had them for several years. Would you need someone from council to run that committee? What's, or is it going to be?
Right now, I've got a person of interest that is interested in basically helping form that and Dave Bozenberg provided her information, so I would be first talking to her and then my wife has also been interested in, she doesn't want to lead, but she is very good about assembling that kind of information and would be good for decorating. So once we get to that point, then I will assemble more volunteers by putting it on Facebook and also saying, you know, hey, we're looking for people that would like to be, that would like to join this committee and then just go from there, so.
And while the initial focus would be?
The initial focus would be winter.
Winter holiday decorations. It could expand.
It could expand. We, I mean, you know, I know that y'all have a very good Halloween base here. I've seen it, you know, the kids get excited about the pumpkin trees and stuff like that. You know, so you could do like in the future, like at fall, we could do banners. I don't know if you've seen the banners like that are in center point, but it's a very simple, nice touch. They go on a pole that stays there and then we just have someone change up the banner. I know there is concern about, and that's why the funds I'm asking for would also be for if we had to rent a lift or if we had to get that, then we could have that availability to, you know, use a boom to put up the thing, the things. I'm not talking about like, I don't want to have them all strewn out for the city. Just down through Main Street, we're looking at maybe eight, ten max that we would have and things like that. But when you look at celebrating veterans, you know, we could look around town to who our veterans are and then get them on a banner and so, and I think that's a great way to celebrate people that have served our country.
Similar to what Mary Lou Martin said.
It's exactly what Mary Lou.
I think that's six months.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't think there would be any shortage of what we could advertise in there, even if it's just welcome to Albernette. You know, as far as the Christmas lights or holiday lights are concerned, you know, those kind of things, you know, obviously for, to try to get people to come here because a lot of people do just drive around to go look at lights. It's, it's still a thing, so, and once you can actually put on a map to go there, so, I mean, it's just something that, just to try to bring more and more people into towns that they know we're here.
I think first thing we do is get to form a committee to find out. That's the thing we ought to do first.
Yep. We need to get that committee an approximate budget.
Some of the studies.
No.
We were like, Chris and I were looking at some of them and I had to look because Danielle had given quite a lot of them on this and, you know, some of them are, you know, you'd go a thousand more for an animation. It just depends on what she wants.
And we would not go crazy the first year. But we would definitely replace the lights.
The Alliance conversation has to come sooner than later because not every pole has, not only does it not have a box on it, it doesn't have the availability, the way it's wired of putting a box on it, for whatever reason that is, that's what was explained to me when we put the boxes on for the lights we have. So if you want a decoration on every pole, Alliance definitely going to have to be in on this and accommodate that.
My brother-in-law works for Alliance and one of the things he could say to the foreman right now, really does like it, when they are visible and helping out community. So that is something that I'll get, I'll get involved in.
Company?
So I'd say we've got a couple, a couple of the community are ready and wants to jump on board.
And now we have funds available. We've got, we've got general funds. Is council interested in setting them a budget now or having them come back to us with a budget?
I'd prefer to get some feedback and more, let's start talking budget numbers.
That's perfectly fine.
Sounds like we have the go-ahead on the committee. Do you need official motion approval on that or I think we're good to just?
We're good.
All right. Anything else on holiday committee and lights? Fifteen C, discuss adding alert Iowa.gov link to our website and social media.
Yeah, this is just, Iowa Alert is asking us to put a link on there that they have for to alert Iowa.gov, basically on our website and on Facebook. And this is just to alert citizens and residents. They can, that basically, they get a text or an email or some sort of alert when severe weather hits. And so it's more of a, they're just asking our permission to put it on our website to help spread the word that, you know, what they do.
I think I saw it in your report, this is sponsored by our local EMA as well.
Yes, it is sponsored by the EMA.
You know, they've had previous systems, I think the last one was called COBRAD or something like that, where they do, try to get as many people signed up as possible.
Right.
I don't see why we couldn't purchase a thing. I mean, they, they post, you know, cooling locations when, in the extreme heat and those types of things, which we've provided them our information for that, so. There's no cost, right?
No.
We're just publicizing on their behalf.
Yes, they just wanted us to know.
Thoughts from council?
You're not required to sign up to it.
No, you're not.
Look at the town thing, you need information as your friend.
Did they give you any kind of communication plan, any posts that they, other cities have been using?
They were asking for a motion first. I'm guessing the next step is once I say, yeah, you guys approved it, then I would get that communication that we're on the website. The main thing is, is they said at the minimum, I don't think it just would, that's it. And I said, I can do that. I mean, I personally know how to.
I just want to make sure whatever they give us, the language is consistent with how we communicate, you know, if we're going to promote it and make sure people know it's not a scam, that we're.
Right.
Really make it sound like it's coming from us.
I can run by you if you like.
Appreciate it. I don't think we need any approval on that. If there's any opposition, speak now. All right, carry forward then. Old business, sixteen A, discuss contract with Lynn Building Department for rental inspections and property maintenance. We do have representation here tonight. We've got Luke with us again. They provided the finalized checklist and this is already in action, that's my understanding.
In action, meaning?
The checklist, your, your staff's, she's certified and out.
Yep.
Program's in force.
This is the list.
This is the list.
I'm glad it was, how's it going out in the county? How are you inspecting out there now?
We're actually, we're, we're starting the program in our contract cities and the reason for that is a larger impact to maintain quality housing because that's one of the biggest issues right now. So rural Lynn County, we focused the program for the cities to start. It's a little harder to do in the counties at this point because you have dilapidated farmhouses and it's hard to determine which ones rental sometimes for us without doing a G.I.S. report, which I don't know how accurate that would be. It's a little different than a water bill. You know what, Johnson County implemented a program and they kind of got stalled out because that's the direction they went to start rural and then expanded there. They have a couple of contract cities. We went the opposite direction. We figured we'd have more success that way and a quicker impact.
So we, we did hear the concern during public comment. My question back on that is if we had local contractors, are they certified and qualified to provide inspections?
No.
That's a different process than being certified to do the work.
So I hire a lot of inspectors. I, I was electrician by trade, I guess to try to respond to the concerns. Most people we interview for even our construction inspector jobs don't know about the codes and how to really apply them. That's not really their thing. Their, their job is more of an install or repair. What, this individual who would be doing these inspections, her entire role is based on one code book. She can quote the sections almost of each one of those things she's talking about. She knows what they are. It's one individual doing the inspections, not multiple people coming back and reinventing the list.
I disagree. I don't think anyone that does construction, plumbing or that, doesn't know all the codes.
I, I agree with that comment except for the fact that it's in a different context. They might know they have to add a vent here or there, but they don't necessarily know how to refer back to the code book or adequately apply it in this case. I don't, so like.
They're smart enough to know what all the codes are and where to find the information.
There's also, from, from a city standpoint, we would then have multiple points of contact versus having, as you mentioned, the single point of contact. We don't necessarily, we've got two full-time employees right now. We don't have the manpower to coordinate all of those inspections and those, and those contractors, so this is, this is why we've looked this direction and again, for consistency across the board, Lynn County is our building inspector as well.
Can I just throw out, if every contractor knew every code and applied those codes properly, we would not need building permits.
No.
We would not need any kind of permits. So obviously, even if the ones you chose to do your inspection are great, there's a guy down the road who's turning, he's skipping every, everything that he can to get the job done. That's why it's a single inspector who knows the code. I understand your, I understand what you're saying, but there's, there's a lot of hacks out there that are, that have no idea what the code book is.
Well, you know what? I think like Gerald House, he is very qualified. He has been building for years and I bet he knows.
He's lost a leg. He's way retired. He's missing a leg from diabetes. He'd never come out of retirement to do inspections.
Well, his son does. He worked with him for years also.
I have a comment that I'd like to make. As of right now, I'm not aware of any problem that we're having with any of our rental properties. Is that I'm not aware of any problems we're having.
How would we know, Tessa?
We don't know because we don't have.
We would have no idea.
Okay, the second thing is every major repair has been a building permit included. We've had a building permit inspector here for a while, plus now we've got the county. The county's coming in and inspecting everything. Why are we that duplicating what the county and our other hired building inspectors have inspected? To me, this is just an undue burden on the landlord.
But if I look at this list, there are things on here that wouldn't require a building permit like fire, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors being brought up to code and brought up to date, handrails. If they're in for a plumbing inspection, they're, they're not going upstairs and wiggling your handrails and making sure your window's open and you've got egress in the basement or any room where you've considered it a bedroom. So this is, I think this is separate from any building inspection that would have happened. to date.
There are plenty of people who make renovations on their own properties.
Buildings we're talking about were built in 1985 and they were all inspected at the time that they were built.
Well, some of them were built before that, but.
It's not specific to your buildings. It's not specific to your buildings.
I know that.
Your buildings might pass inspection just fine. And to Chester's point about building inspections, I look up five properties approximately a month because I see crews working on them and usually at least one out of those five didn't get a building permit for what they are doing in that house, even a hired crew.
You mean in Albernett?
Chris's point, there's people that do the renovations themselves that never get a, never get a permit either because they're doing it themselves.
And we do know we have property maintenance issues in town and that's just exterior visible things, broken windows, peeling paint, you know, we do have nuisance and issues there.
So interesting point on, kind of touch on what Guy said, the chances of you getting a contractor to get a roofing permit, good luck because we did in one day as a training exercise for our new code compliance person Veronica. We, I call it a walkabout enforcement day and then I sent her and another inspector out. They drove around, checked our permit software and she's bilingual, so she can, a lot of the people doing that kind of work, sometimes they, they say they can't speak English, which is a big barrier to overcome and you could say get a permit all day long and they keep saying the same thing, I don't speak English and whatever. Long story short, we found contractors who she was able to get to come in for the permits that weren't registered with the state, weren't even legal to do the work anymore. I mean, how many people have they scammed in the past couple of years after the deratio, which is a terrible thing.
Which is an unusual situation then.
Right, but I guess.
Because people were coming, were desperate to get repairs done.
There's, I get so many complaints on rental units that we can't help and I mean, it's just something that doesn't get touched, except for in the more populous of the cities. Mary and Hiawatha, Cedar Rapids, they all have those programs. And what happens is, and I guarantee it's not you, you folks, it's different landlords. They don't take care of their properties.
We don't have that much rental property in Albernett here. We had, we put on just lately a new roof on our house and of course, the guy that came, I mean, he was, said he was responsible for getting the permit.
So I would say, I mean, really any house in town could be a rental house. We're not, it's not just, it's not just apartments. It could be any house as well and we do have several and realistically, any house in town could be a rental. And to Luke's point, if we're the only town in the area without some kind of program, I just think that's going to become a draw for those particular landlords that don't want to take care of their properties.
Well, we have city employees like Guy.
I'm already maxed out. I cannot run around and do, and check houses and do inspections.
Or is he qualified?
There's two of us. There's two of us.
To inspect work for people doing it here in Albernett, I don't think.
I'm not certified. I don't have a thimble hole of knowledge that Luke has.
No, I'm not saying that you do the inspection. You could check to see if they have a permit.
I do.
It's the permit.
But this is maintenance as well.
That tells you what kind of work you're going to receive.
I don't think I understand what we're talking about here, so I'm sorry, may I?
Any other questions, concerns for Luke? This is third meeting. We've got all the final information. Yes.
The phrase in here I don't quite understand. It talks about electrical outlets. It talks about separate and remote receptacles.
Can you, can you scroll to it?
It's under electrical. Second to the last one. We're talking about.
The space in the dwelling unit shall contain at least two separate and remote reciprocal outlets.
So what that means is you can't put it in one box. And the reason for that is so like, say you look at a standard, that's a duplex receptacle.
Yep. You don't want it hot air.
She, the whole intent of that section.
Put one there and one over there.
So you don't have extension cords running, which is more of a fire hazard. That's the reason for it. You have to separate those two.
I knew there was a reason, I just didn't understand the phrase.
Yeah. And I will say and I'll point out, and I don't know how clearly it says it on there. I know it says it in some context, but when our inspector goes in, they don't make you bring a building up to current code. It just has to be installed in a safe, maintained manner. And it's not like they're going to walk in and say, you have to rebuild your staircase because it doesn't meet the 2021 code. That's what I, like a home inspector might say. They usually, well, I gotta be careful with that one, but they, they kind of, they'll say, oh, your stairs don't meet code. And then all the buyer gets all freaked out and everybody's, but that doesn't mean it's more of a recommendation in that context. In this case, it's, you can't have a handrail that was removed by your tenant and because somebody might need help getting down the stairs.
If you're going to remodel a house, then they have to bring up the code.
If you remodel a house, the new portions. Yep, that's when you get a permit. If, if you have an existing home and you want to rent it to somebody else, this is like the most basic, just maintain your property. The, the point of this, just to clarify, is like I had a landlord that had, I want to say it was 1,100 properties, okay? I helped the city of Hiawatha get their program going. That was years ago, but, so long story short, there's one, one landlord had 1,100 rental units. Now I found rental units that had broken water pipes in the basement, running water, four, five inches of water. The tenants were trying for like a month to get, and the landlord just ignored them to get, yep, we'll get to it, kept hanging up.
I want to flip that on its head too. Likewise, you can get a tenant that has expectations of, you know, everything's going to be updated in, you know, at a certain standard and if it's not in here, that also protects the landlord from unreasonable expectations.
So, and this is a big part of our, our internal conversations is, like one of the biggest things people fail for is smoke detectors. And the reason is that the tenants want a smoke. They don't want the thing buzzing at them all the time. Our program isn't going to be ignorant to that fact. We're not trying to come back and do, have a re-inspection fee. If it's a smoke trap, I've actually talked to a colleague about buying batteries because that's the other thing, they'll pull the batteries out, then who's responsible to supply the battery? Well, what if we just say, okay, as part of your compliance with our program, we'll just buy the batteries, we'll just stick the new batteries in there for you so that we don't have to come back until the next code cycle, one. And so that we're not nuisance-ing good, responsible renters like you guys, you know? So I guess that our program, like if your tenant trashed your unit and there's garbage all over, we're not going to hold you accountable for that. We're going to tell them to clean up the trash and we just help you.
Oh, that long. Oh, no. Every tenant that moves out, you have to completely.
No, I mean, so if, as part of this program, if our inspector comes in and your tenant has got garbage thrown all over.
We've got one right there, right now. And he's, they're related to it and she's dying in a nursing home and she hasn't passed away yet, but as soon as she does, we're going to have to clean that thing out. And it stinks in there. That does. It's awful.
So I guess that's all I'm trying to say is we're not going to like, if somebody's just messy, we're not going to come after you.
Yeah, but you're, you coming in and tell them they have to clean it up. You might just, well, talk to the wall because it won't work.
Well, I can't make any huge promises on that, other than they might clean it for a day and you know, I get it.
Yeah.
My point is, is common sense has to come in. I mean, there's good people who have, they maintain their properties and there's bad tenants. My folks had rental properties, totally understand it and I was usually the one after I got out of service, they'd say, go take care of that for us, okay? So I understand, I'm just saying there is a lot of common sense in this program. It's very, very basic. We just had a meeting last week with, let's say, five landlords from Cedar Rapids and they were like, you guys are on the right track. This is great. Like really basic, down-to-earth, no big surprises. It's all right up front, you'll be able to know what they're looking for, so.
Well, my point is, I just think it's an unnecessary expense for the town that they could use the money to do better things for in the town.
It's an expense to the county.
We're not a for-profit organization. We do this just because the board supports the need for, to maintain our housing stock and to provide quality housing. Has nothing to do, county doesn't make money.
Well, somebody has to pay you.
We don't, we're at fork poppers up there and lose money.
Any other questions for more?
We have the two years.
Okay.
Council, any other questions for Luke? So again, this is, it's been on the agenda several times. We do have final information. I'd like to ask for action on this, one way or another. Next steps beyond this. We will have to adopt, so on the backside of the checklist, there's a proposed housing code and then there's a separate page that has the proposed maintenance code. These are still being finalized by Lynn County. Luke mentioned, I believe they're going to be approved. They're, they're in the third reading, so they should be approved within the next couple of weeks. So then we would adopt these codes into our code, correct? Like we did with the building code? Is that the intention?
Yep, it's the exact same thing and we're just going to update it as it.
Yes, so this would be our new. We do, they are separate. They're two separate programs, correct?
What's that?
The housing code and the property maintenance.
Yes, I did that intentionally, so it was two separate ordinances. Yep.
So this would also require an ordinance provision. So at this time, I'm looking for. Can we accept one without the other?
Yeah.
You can?
I believe you said we could. I think we're at a point where we're ready to take action, make a decision here, so I would look for motion to approve contract with Lynn. Again, this is just motion to move forward. We'd still have to finalize the 2080. Our lawyer has not reviewed that because I wanted to make sure that this board and council was on board before we extended those funds. And then we would have to adopt the ordinance and get all that worked in, so. Looking for a decision to move forward with Lynn County Building Department for rental and property maintenance inspections. Moved by Myers. Second by Bosenberg. I think we've had discussions, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Sixteen B, discuss website hosting and support. I did further research and actually you're going to see an updated spreadsheet with additional amendments on, oh, Luke, thank you for coming. We appreciate you being here.
I have one more thing.
Yes, sorry. I skipped right past that.
I forgot about saying, we just went live with a complaint, online complaint form on our website and that's for building services, anything you guys got. If you have a neighbor complaining about somebody doing work, we just opened that up and if you, it also explains what the requirements are if we're doing rental or it's a property maintenance. And those emails only go to three of us, so just letting you know that that is available.
On your website, site, your website.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. All right. Last meeting we had GoDaddy and Namecheap. I did more research on Namecheap and found out they don't offer some of the services we would need. Additionally, they only have email and chat support, which we've done that with G-Works to a certain extent and it doesn't work. Sometimes you just have to be able to pick up the phone and call someone. So I started looking at other providers, so you'll see you'll also now have Dreamhost and SiteGround. Put in there, you'll notice compared to GoDaddy, they also do not provide all of the email services and functionality that we need. Specifically, I did have to add in email archiving as a regulated, I don't know if I call it industry, but because we are regulated, we need to have our emails archived so they can be recalled at any time for Sunshine Act. That was not something we had on the previous sheet. So my recommendation would be that we move forward with GoDaddy in that we can have an all-in-one solution. They offer our Office 365, which is Microsoft Word, Excel, PowerPoint, those things. We're paying those licenses separately today. That would be included with the email plan for them, so there will be some savings on that end.
So what's the difference here? You got to give a price. Is this a price range or price differential?
So the first one is year one. They generally come with year one discounts. And then after the backslash is the renewal cost. So that will be year one, everything's going to look a little cheaper and then it does go up from there. About a thousand dollars a year. That is for what they call managed WordPress, so they would do any of the upgrades for us if we needed it restored or backed up. They do all of that. We don't have to, we don't have to have a tech person in-house that knows how to do that. GoDaddy provides that support. That is true for any of these, these are all for managed WordPress, so we don't have to do that.
It's email, the website, all in one.
Yep, GoDaddy would be an all-in-one solution. Email, website and as a bonus, the Office 365, which none of the other providers offer licenses for. Including email archiving. Again, GoDaddy's the only one that had that specifically called out as a product, which would allow us to comply with the Sunshine Act.
The license for the 365 that's on our computers?
Say again.
The license for the 365 would be for all the office computers here?
Yeah, it's up to five installations. And that is, I did go with the price for the actual install versus the web client because some of them were like the web app. I dislike the web app. So this, the price here includes the actual downloaded version of Microsoft Word. Yeah, it's 99, so that, that price there is, if you went directly through Microsoft, is the $99 per person.
Yeah. So we have.
On top of 24 seven phone, email and chat support.
I've used GoDaddy before the construction services.
And we host our domain with them today, which I think it's, it's not a lot. It's like $12 a month. So they actually, they're the ones that host our albernettaia.org name, even though we have our website. And if we go to the managed WordPress, that's included. So it's small, but it's another $12 savings if they host our site as well. So that would be my recommendation. We don't necessarily need a decision now, though we have heard from our current provider that he'd like to be done by the end of the year. And we will need his assistance, especially on the email side, making sure everything gets backed up so that we can move over, so.
Would you welcome the motion to forward with GoDaddy? It's me.
I would.
If I move that forward with GoDaddy and their hosting club services.
And email? Motion by Myers, second by Trum. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. That brings us to item number 17, final comments and discussion. Start by left, Councilor Myers. Councilor Shox?
It's Chris, you're doing a good job, Shox.
Thank you.
Both of you, both of you.
Brian?
Nothing to add.
Steve, anything bad? Chris?
Nothing.
Guy? That, I would seek a motion to adjourn. Oh, it's a tie. Moved by Trum, second by Bosenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Meeting's adjourned.